For work session of the Richmond Community Schools. Please, please stand for the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can have the reading of the mission statement, please.
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Thank you. And if we could now have the mission statement.
Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to support your students' freedom of choice, purpose, and service.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our work session, item 2.01.
President Rotten, trustee, who's coming before you this evening to introduce and welcome back to our Corporation, back to this boardroom, Dr. Shetayak Bala, and this is Jennifer Oliver Brady, who has been before this board, what, seems like three weeks ago, but yeah, well, next two years ago. So we introduce what has been sort of, you know, sort of both institutions in NIET three. So ladies, thank you, I know that we were under the weather previously, but you're back with us resiliently and of the presentation this evening pertaining to the strategic planning process that we all know we embark upon, got a mind, and this is all pretty true as well here. The presentation that we brought out to ladies, the floor is yours.
Wonderful, well, thank you, and we are very honored to be here with you. The drive over from Indianapolis was uneventful, thank goodness. So that is always the case, and just wanted to share again our gratitude to you for being flexible. We were both, who say under the weather was sort of an understatement, a couple of months back when we were planning to be here, so thank you for your flexibility in adjusting. We are both happy and healthy today and excited to share a bit of information with you. My name is Jennifer Oliver Brady, I have been with the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching for a little over a decade. Prior to that, I served as a teacher and school leader in the Indianapolis area, worked at the University of Indianapolis for a short time, and also the Department of Education too, before joining NIET. And just very passionate about the work that we do because it changes lives, and that's really no understatement, it really can and change, can and does change lives, and we have seen some of that impact right here in Richmond, where we are honored to partner and continue to serve alongside district and school leaders here. I'll let Dr. Laine introduce herself briefly, and then we'll get started.
Hello, I'm Dr. Laine, I actually have been affiliated with NIET for 13 years. I actually was a master teacher in Goshen School, so when we talk about career paths, I'm one of the products. I was a career teacher, I worked with Jen at the state, at the University of Indianapolis, and I went back to Goshen and I was the principal at West Goshen Elementary, where we were honored to actually be awarded the Founder's Award from NIET with a high poverty, high EL population that in one year we moved from a D to an A and maintained that A status for the four years I was there. Then I moved into an assistant superintendent role with Goshen, and then just recently jumped over to NIET as the Midwest Regional Director, so supporting our specialists in the ground over the entire Midwest. So I'm happy to be here, excited to share with you the work we've been doing.
Great, okay, well, we'll go ahead and dig in, and I believe you have the materials we're going to share in front of you, so please just stop us at any time. We will try to be as concise as possible, but hopefully this is a time for conversation and learning for us together. Just wanted to share really five things we wanted to do today. First of all, just a quick refresh on who we are, you've learned a little bit about NIET over the years, just want to do a quick refresh on who we are, and really think through our work and our impact in Indiana in particular, and share one just example of that impact. And then briefly, that'll be number one and number two, but we'll get into what we are excited, most excited to share with you about today, and that is what we've been doing here in Richmond alongside your leadership team at the district level and school level. And then we're excited to share some reflections, some quotes from some key Richmond educators to sharing some of their thoughts and insights on the partnership and the work to date. Finally, we'd like to focus in specifically today on one of our services that we'd like to share with you, and that is our strategic planning services, and we think you might be interested in adding those to services we already provided. We want to share with you too, a little bit more about how we approach strategic planning and what you might expect from us if that's something that you're interested in partnering with us for also. So just a quick refresh on NIET and who we are, we are a national nonprofit organization, but with an Indiana-based team. So anytime one of our team members comes in to support leaders here in your district, you know that we are coming from Indiana with a wealth of knowledge of what's happening in our state, but also with a national perspective and context too. We have a research and evaluation arm of our organization that is intended to measure our impact because we're a very student outcomes-focused organization, and we want to make sure that those outcomes are driving everything we do. We center our mission, as you can see here on the screen, and we start our conversations with our mission, just like you do with yours. We are all about building educator excellence. We know that the difference maker for kids is the teacher in the classroom and in terms of school-based factors, and so we believe too in the power of great teachers and the power of great teaching, and how important it is for teachers to be supported by excellent school leaders and district leaders as well. So we are a people organization, and when we come in, we pour into your people so that they can better pour into your students and give them all of those limitless possibilities and opportunities for success. We approach that by working shoulder to shoulder with our partners. We dig in as Brent and Mark and Elizabeth, I know Ken and Dr. Wright, fantastic, we don't sort of stand back, we get in and roll our sleeves up right alongside you, do the heavy thinking, do the heavy lifting, do the hard work. And one of the partners we work with in Indiana used the word embedded to describe our partnership with them, they said, you're really embedded here, and I think that was a really high compliment for the type of work we do. We see ourselves as embedded, your success is our success, and we are here in it to win it with the long term. We build up that capacity in the people and help build systems and structures that are sustainable over time so that we can start to, you know, peel off our support over time so that those systems and structures, and Dr. Laine will talk more about those in a second here, are sustainable and can help you face any instructional or student learning challenge that's in front of you long into the future and long after our support starts to, starts to step down. Student success, just like for you, student success is your focus too. We believe in student achievement being anchored in four key areas. First of all, structuring schools for success, that means allowing time and space for the things that need to happen, developing the people that can lead those structures. We believe in prioritizing excellent classroom instruction as a vehicle towards student success. A lot of things you can prioritize, but prioritizing high-quality instructional practice, high-quality experiences for our students every day has to be at the top of our list of priorities to ensure students' needs are being met each and every day. We believe that these investments lead to educator retention, retaining your most talented individuals that are serving your students, and as a result, we're growing student achievement with clear expectations and goal setting from year to year in mind for continuous improvement. We do this through, this is my favorite graphic that we use, it's also very complex and messy, so, but it does represent well what we do. This is a system, and it's a system of support for anyone in the educational space within a school district, so we start always at the top with our students in mind and how we're supporting those students, giving them access to rigorous, engaging coursework each and every day. But we also know that teachers need support, this work is complex, and so we have to think about how we're supporting individual teachers, groups of teachers within their learning, and we do that through structures we call cluster, those per-weekly professional learning meetings, and through a school and district-level ILT or instructional leadership team that's helping to guide and steer the work at those various levels. So we could spend a lot of time just on this slide, but I know we don't have a lot of time, but this really represents the sustainable system of support that we're helping to establish here in Richmond Community Schools. Another way to look at that, a little more simplified, less complex way, is the graphic here on your screen. We think about the work starting at the district level, setting district goals, setting district priorities, whether that be we're focused on reading, or, you know, career pathways, whatever is relevant at the district level, or all of the above, and really being strategic about communicating those goals, bringing that into the school level so that principals working alongside teacher leaders can form a school leadership team to drive those goals forward, bringing that new learning, that support to teachers in our cluster model and through coaching, and then seeing those, the change that needs to change into the classroom, and then reevaluating what is happening in the classroom that we need to reprioritize and bring through the systems and structures of support to see the change that we want to see. There's really a few different, you know, glances at those systems and structures that we wanted to bring to you, so we really supported these different levels. That district-level support includes a tailored plan based on strengths and areas of need for each district, that includes, and this is some of the work that you'll hear about a little later on from Dr. Laine here in Richmond, but we helped the district leadership team grow related to their instructional leadership through executive coaching at the district level, through our consulting work. And the last bullet here you see on this slide, also through our strategic planning process, which we're going to share quite a bit more with you about, just a little bit. At the school level, we probably pour into school-level leaders in terms of principal support, assistant principal support, our Principal Standards Rubric is currently being used as a framework here in Richmond to set a vision for what high-quality principal leadership looks and sounds like. We also have several, you know, customized trainings and onsite coaching and support specific to principals' needs also. And then finally, when we think about teacher leader support, in particular, thinking about your instructional coaches with men, where teachers were elevating those roles to help recruit and retain some of your talented people, but also so that everyone has a piece of the pie in terms of supporting excellent teaching and the impact on student learning. Our signature model is called TAP, we're doing some of those pieces here in Richmond, but we also customize our support for teacher leaders through our cluster model, through coaching that's happening, and through some of our trainings and support systems too. So I know I've gone fast and furious, but I wanted to share again that our work is about our impact, and that's how we measure our success, we want to see impact on educators' capacity, on their confidence, but also on student outcomes and closing equity gaps and achievement gaps. So one example we wanted to bring to you just to share today comes from another Indiana district we've been partnering with for some time now, Perry Township Schools on the south side of Indianapolis. If you're interested in learning more about our research, we do have an annual research summary that's published on our website. Our research and evaluation team is actively engaging in studies, robust, you know, kind of peer-reviewed-type studies that show the impact of our work. This is one example of what we saw over time in terms of closing the equity gaps between English learners in Perry Township Schools within passing English Language Arts and Math State assessments compared to statewide averages. So you can see Perry Township's scores here in the gold bar and in the salmon bar, or it's the Indiana statewide average, and you can see the difference in Perry Township's scores in closing those gaps compared to the state average. So this is the type of data too that we want to share with you because, you know, we're carefully thinking about this impact for your district also, and working with you to try to shine a bright light on the growth that you're seeing as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Laine, and she's going to talk a little bit more specifically about our work and partnership here in Richmond, and share some of those highlights and testimonials of the work that's been happening and the success that we're seeing today.
Yeah, so if we think back to that slide that Mrs. Brady showed with the district and the school, and it's kind of this ongoing, we're going to, we're going to talk through how that work has been done here in Richmond. Okay, so here you can see these great Richmond folks here. Yes, so this was actually, this picture was taken during a planning session with Brent, Mark, and Elizabeth. Angie Kendall is on the right, she is our senior specialist that comes to Richmond. She meets with this district team regularly to plan and implement that high-quality district leadership PD, meetings for those school leaders. Then they take that, the district leaders then go back and into the schools and support those leaders into implementing that new learning they learned from the district meeting back into their schools and their classrooms. Then if you keep going kind of around that circle, you have the principal support here in Richmond, you have the Principal Standards Rubric, and here is actually a beginning of the year meeting that was happening, and the principals set goals around that rubric, and then the district team is sitting with them and monitoring those goals, and they're gathering that data and evidence to show that we're moving towards the goal that I have set, and they continue with that. That rubric is really intended to be used as a framework for principals to know, okay, what is an effective school leadership? What pieces I really need to be implementing in my school? I can tell you personally, as a principal, I so appreciated this tool because so many times, just like with teachers and the instructional rubric that they, the teaching and learning standards rubric from NIET, you go in and you teach, but it's pretty complex. It's very complex to also lead a school, and to have those, that district person supporting me as a principal, and then when I was in the district supporting the principal in that, you have somebody to really talk through and, like, really discuss those goals that you want to happen at your school. So this is a pretty powerful piece, and I give credit to you at the district office for supporting your principals in that. Then if you keep going, the principals lead that building-level ILT, and Mrs. Kendall again comes in and she supports where they can plan and implement those weekly instructional leadership team meetings, and in those meetings you have the principal, you have your instructional coaches, and you have your mentor teachers, and they're focused on the student need and what has been identified through our data. What do we really need to come in and really get in the work and plan to what's going to be impacting our teachers and students, and then we're going to go out and support teachers in making that happen. All of those meetings are aligned to the school goal that the school has set, and they take that new learning right back to the classroom so that you see, I think the cool thing about this is like, you don't go off to a training somewhere, you know, and then say, okay, good luck, go take that back. No, you have people right there supporting the work in the building and the classroom with students. And then that leads to the weekly professional development cluster meetings that your instructional coaches are leading, and this picture is probably, Dr. Wright, probably one of my favorite pictures of all time, because you can see Dr. Wright is there in the cluster meeting with the teachers and the instructional coach along with Brent. They are attending these cluster meetings so that they can see is that transfer happening, and that cluster, they're analyzing that student work and data, they're talking about those strong instructional practices from the teaching and learning standards, they model those for the teachers, they, the teachers leave with a plan. They go, they have time in their cluster to develop from that new learning and make a plan to go back and apply it right in the classroom, and teachers receive follow-up support. So if I'm a new teacher in this cluster and I feel like I'm kind of floundering, I know I have somebody there that can come and follow up and help me in the classroom to make sure that I'm implementing it at a high level. So here are some reflections from your actual teachers that had them reflect just on the supports that they've gotten this year and what, what can they say about it? So this is from one of your instructional coaches, and she said, "Our teachers are on board with the NIET framework due to," and I love this, "the impact their professional learning is having on student achievement. All teachers, including our creative arts teachers, are engaging in collaborative discussions during our cluster meetings. Teachers are applying what they learn in cluster, and they're engaging in the evidence bring-backs, because they always bring back how we evaluate, once we go apply, let's evaluate how it worked. One aspect we would change is being able to have more time in our week for cluster and professional learning." I thought that was pretty powerful too, from your instructional coach. You have another instructional coach that said, "The explicit time dedicated to professional development that is intentionally connected to student work evidence has been a good thing for our teachers. The design helps to build a collaborative learning environment, intentionally creates dialogue within and across grade levels, creates common language and expectations that helps to develop teacher capacity, reflective accountability for myself and others, and builds that camaraderie among our staff." And then you got a teacher leader that said, "The support from our NIET specialist Angie Kendall has been essential to us getting on the right path. She meets us where we are, we treasure our time with her so much, we would love to have her more. The way we have strategically grouped our teachers for cluster has enhanced our learning and discussions. Our teachers feel safe to collaborate and are engaged in new learning." And then one last one from the instructional coach. "Our cluster professional development goals are directly aligned to our school goals. We share student work in clusters so we can give feedback to each other on the student needs and next steps, and then during that follow-up, we observe and give feedback to the teachers on that new learning from cluster. We build on their strengths and collaborate on next steps." So as we think about this partnership with Richmond, we continuing that partnership into the 24-25 school year with that ongoing training and onsite coaching and support to really keep going deeper into those practices, and then support for district-wide strategic plan, we want to show you that tonight for your consideration. But these are two areas that we would love to be able to continue with all of you, and we're going to dive into the strategic planning document that we developed here in just a minute, but maybe we can stop before we go into that and see if there's any questions or comments he would like to make?
Yeah, the TAP system. I'm not as familiar with that, most of this we've been hearing about, but I have not heard of the TAP system, could you go into that a little bit and just explain?
Absolutely, and many of the pieces of that comprehensive system are alive and well here in Richmond, so when I talk about it, some of them, that sounds a lot like what we do, maybe with a few slight exceptions. And we realized over time that this comprehensive system we call TAP is a great fit in some places, and then some places say, okay, well, that doesn't all quite fit us, but we want to use kind of more like an à la carte approach, we want to use certain pieces of it. So within the TAP system, there are really four key pieces. One is a career ladder for teachers in a trajectory, it should sound familiar, like your mentor teacher role, like your instructional coach role, having teachers have the opportunity to serve as instructional leaders without leaving the classroom and stepping into an administrator role. This is both a capacity-building strategy so that the principal alone doesn't have to support the entire school in instructional growth, but it also can be a retention tool to keep some of your most talented teachers at your school who want to grow and want to take that next step, and they can kind of aspire to that without leaving for a principal job, for example. The next part of TAP, yes, go ahead, please.
I can just bring a little bit closer home of that career pathway which Dr. Laine, you expressed that you, at one point were on.
You're supposed to be a child, yes, here I am.
Well, we actually have a few posts for children ourselves, they're very elementary support. If we were to have assistant principals at the elementary, Mrs. Eisenberger would still be with us, she was the instructional coach there, with her work with NIET and framework and that instructional best practice tool, which she now is an assistant principal also, because we, and that's part of.
That she left with, that she misses.
Well, and we actually have a few others that are in the similar pipeline, but yes, that is one example.
It's a good example. What we've found is those that serve in those teacher leader roles, it's like your bench, you know, if we're going to use a basketball analogy, it's the folks that are sitting on your bench that are ready for that next step, you're growing them all the way. What I've seen over the years is some of the most successful principals in year one, they are successful because they've had other leadership opportunities as teacher leaders and as coaches, and they're more ready to serve in an assistant principal or principal role on day one. So that's one component of TAP. The other, another component, and they're all very connected and intersected, interlined, aligned and interconnected, there's the words, is our professional learning model, and that is our cluster meetings and our instructional leadership team meetings. So those two components are here. The level of quality of those structures continues to deepen over time, so there's a lot of layers and complexities to doing those structures at a high level, and we're continuing, our support is continuing to deepen the level of quality of what happens in an ILT meeting, what happens in a cluster meeting, what happens in a district ILT meeting over time. The third component is using our rubric, specifically our teaching and learning standard rubric, both as a framework, but also for formal teacher evaluations also. So that's something we've been talking with Dr. Wright about over the years, and so that we see that tool as serving both purposes, both as an instructional framework and as a formal evaluation tool for teachers, our principal rubric also, so that's something we've thought about, you know, working toward over time here in Richmond. The fourth component is a differentiated pay component, so performance-based compensation where teachers have an opportunity to earn different levels of pay compared to a traditional salary schedule, what you might have, or maybe some of those teacher leader roles earning a stipend, like a mentor teacher earning a stipend, so you have some of that piece in place. So many, many of those elements are in place, some, you know, maybe we're taking, taking our time to move up to getting, to getting there right here in Richmond.
And what does TAP stand for?
It's an interesting question, and you would think it would be a simple answer, but it's actually not quite a simple answer. Originally, it stood for the Teacher Advancement Program. Over time, it's sort of taken on its own, own sort of different meaning, and we call it now the TAP system to better try to describe what it actually is. So we call it the TAP system, but originally it started as the Teacher Advancement Program a little over two decades ago when it was first conceived. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to add that some of the quotes you've shared, we remember Fran, Hickory and Stolt and I were able to visit a school this week, and I think some of the quotes were exactly what we heard from the principal and from the instructional coach there, just how happy they were with NIET coming into their building and the teachers and how it helped, how they were able to personalize it, so it wasn't just something thrown on them, but that they take the parts that were so important that work for them and utilize them, just the excitement of that, so.
Fantastic.
Yep, and then I just wanted to add, I guess the part that I really liked in my experience with being a. Yep. And then I just wanted to add, I guess the part that I really liked in my experience with being an educator and attending professional development was I got a lot of like, oh, this is great. But then I went back and I was like, oh, what do I do with this? So to hear that part where you said teachers leave with like something, they leave with a plan. I think that's so vital to have that plan and then have those layers of support after the professional development.
Well said, yeah. And, and when we work toward giving teachers just a little bite at a time. So it's not overwhelming, but they have something manageable that they can take back almost immediately with a lot of support to do so. I mean, I have the same experience. I go to conferences and just come back, you know, with my head in the clouds dreaming about some things. And then you just get into your day-to-day and sometimes nothing really transfers over. And that's actually, conferences are not really, we know from research, not the best model for teacher professional learning. A more ongoing weekly approach that's very job embedded and specific to your school is, is what research tells us is the best way for teachers um, to continue their own professional learning.
I could also say, as a principal, having my leadership team tell me this is too much right now. And they would help me really think about how do we need to chunk this out, this learning out? Because they're in the trenches with the teachers day in and day out. So being able to have them as my team to help me think about, okay, what's our next step? How much is too much? We got to keep moving, we know that as we're monitoring the data. But I'm one that I can say, okay, come on, guys, we got to get in there, we got to get moving. But they would keep me in check too as a leader. Okay, don't, don't go too fast and everybody gets frustrated or overwhelmed, so.
I have several things I'll leave until later because I could accuse down the discussion.
No, not you, Dr. Wright.
Okay, well, let's, let's move into then the strategic planning process. You have a pretty like more com- comprehensive um, five-year strategic plan draft that was included. Um, one thing that, just to highlight um, here is just the process for a strategic plan that NIT would take. And again, this is all spelled out in more detail in your, your draft that you have. But um, just want you to know that NIT has support in districts around the nation in strategic planning. And the one really neat thing here is we know the work that is happening intimately. And so for us to be able to build a strategic plan with you um, knowing also the needs, that ongoing monitoring and support, which is down at, you know, down at the last part, once you get the whole plan going, that monitoring and support would just be ongoing. Because if we're here with you and we're meeting with your district team, we can monitor and support that plan um, with the support that we are already providing. Especially because I'm guessing that most strategic plans I've been involved with them have an academic student achievement side to them. And that would be the part that, you know, really is the most important to monitor. We want to see that student achievement. So um, if, if we were a part of this process, it can just be naturally embedded also in the support that we give in the trenches at the schools. So this is just a quick outline. We, we would have vision setting meetings. Um, we would set that initial one and then really work with the district to identify those focus areas and conduct that SWOT analysis on those areas to really name what are our strengths, weaknesses, challenges, opportunities, threats? Let's get it all out there. Then we would start developing those goals and um, the action plan. What do we need to do about it? Um, I always say this when I'm in school, so I'm like, we can talk about it all day long, but what are we going to do about it? Let's get our action and get in there and really um, make it happen. Um, and then, you know, you have the steering committee and community subcommittee feedwork, feedback sessions. But that is going to be critical. We know having stakeholders a part of this um, planning is key. And definitely, we want to be able to have people involved in that process. And keeping you updated along the way is also, also key. I know Dr. Wright will continue to do that as well. And then the last would be just that, um, implementation and monitoring plan. I, I've been a part of strategic planning sessions where we've done this work and then I never see the people again. And then we're trying to implement and monitor it. And we aren't really held accountable to making the plan work. So I think that's a critical piece, is that we continue to implement. And then let's monitor that implementation. And what are we noticing we need to tweak or change along the way? Uh, here is sort of just a timeline that you also have. And again, this is in a lot more detail um, in your draft. Uh, presenting this to you, we wanted to do this in February again, apologize. Since this kind of took over in both of our households. But um, then start working with the district team here in the spring and summer, start defining that steering committee work and really fine-tuning that timeline. Again, that's a draft that is not written in stone. We want to work with you to make that timeline work in your schedule. Um, really spend the summer too, doing identifying the steering committees and like what are those meeting dates going to be? Um, and then really in the fall is when we would really start our work um, through that process that you saw. And then by spring twenty twenty-five, you would have your strategic plan finalized and ready for the next five years to implement. And again, you could be a part of this ongoing implementation and monitoring um, with you along the way. So at the, at the top, when we drafted that outline, um, it, it says approximately twenty-one days. It'd be seventeen days of really deep work with all of you. And then four days of gathering the data and disaggregating the data. And um, so it'd be a total of about twenty-one days over the next year to really get to that point where we're ready to finalize and get that plan in place. Um, if we need to adjust those days, absolutely we can. You can see in the timeline, there's some optional days. One that we have even that we could start with this spring is to do some school-based needs assessments at some of your schools. We've already done that at a couple of your schools. So we have that data already that we can use to help drive that um, strategic plan. But there's an optional more days there that we could go into the four schools that we have it. So we can really hear from teachers and, and stakeholders from the, the school level as we're identifying sort of the goals and action steps of where we, or when we bring that back to the district team and talk with them about what we find. Questions or comments? This again is for you to, to peruse and look through and, and think about, so yes.
I have a question. So about the five-year strategic planning process, but it looks like about a year to, you know, you get stakeholders and develop the strategic plan with us. And then is it four years of implementation? Is that what you're suggesting or?
Really, we could have five years of implementation after that. But if you decide, no, that's too long, we'd rather cut it to a three-year implementation, we, we can work that. Some, some companies do three, some do five.
Okay.
Um, you know, if you want a four, that, that really can be guided by your district team and what, what they see the needs are. I think once we start getting those goals, if the, if we see that these goals are going to really take three to five years to attain, then, then we'll map that out.
And applying this, we all converge as to what the steering committee experience would look like or the beginning stages, phases of this process. Right now, we have another vendor that's currently in our corporation that's collecting um, data regarding to their initiative that, that we're, we're considering uh, with grade level realignment. And I know our board members have been participating, more participating in that data collection. Yeah. And, and with regard to the steering committee, if you can just elaborate further as to what that, those first stages could look like and have looked like elsewhere, would you all?
Yeah, so this steering committee work, like our, our main work would be with the district. But then I know talking with Dr. Wright, having us a part of the steering committee work to begin with could also be very beneficial. And we are all on board with that. Um, we can do that work. We've worked with districts where NIT gets things up and going and then they step out and then they just keep coming back to meet with the district team. And we've done it where, you know, the district is saying, we really want you to lead the first new steering committee. We will do that, we definitely will. It just depends on, on what you need and we'll provide that support for you.
The current vendor that we're working with is engaging, now like I mentioned, our board, our strong solution team, building leaders, community members that are coming in to also meet. So there's some familiarity already and some flaws around the community that, that these steps that our board has approved, put in motion are, are starting.
Certainly any of that great data would be part of the work of, you know, setting those goals. We would ingest that data that's already been collected and hopefully analyzed and consider that if it's valuable to you, it would be certainly a part of any goal-setting process and, and it could help drive, drive what's happening without stopping that train that's already in motion in terms of that um, data collection process. Certainly um, you can see the connections there. Um, and we have done this process in other places where that's, that they, where they have other organizations um, that are currently serving their district in, in similar capacities, collecting data and providing other services. Um, and we would just work closely with you all to see those connections and, and to make sure everything is all kind of um, developing under one, one aligned, you know, direction without it being inefficient in any way.
Then from that, to Mrs. Brown's question, goals are established? Is that plan and those goals that we then lead with?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, and from our, from our experience, we have, you know, some sample steering committing, steering committee long-range plans and agendas that we could use, but very much customized to the needs of Richmond Community Schools. And but kind of a, a, a bank of resources to draw from. We wouldn't be, you know, starting from a blank page. Uh, we would bring in what we have seen worked and with other partners across the country.
So speaking of samples, do you have some, um, some examples or samples of strategic plans that you've done for other school districts? So we can kind of get an idea of what the depth of detail you guys are providing to us?
Yes.
And I, uh, we actually, we actually back during the exact committee session. This was from Humbert, Humbert, Humbert.
There were.
Humbert and Perry.
Yeah.
I think that's okay.
Yeah.
I'll forward, I'll forward that to, to our board so they can see the examples.
Yeah, you do have those.
Yeah.
Super great. Yeah. And if you need more examples, we can share those. We tried to pull a couple of examples that might, you know, look a little bit like something that you might end up at, at, over the course of the process.
Do you have an estimated cost?
Yeah, so we, we charge by a daily rate. And so with NIT, we set that daily rate at twenty-seven fifty. But then if you don't, like we say twenty-one days and we only do seventeen, you'd only be charged for seven.
Two thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and again, the estimate, estimate currently that you have in front of you is for twenty-one days. And fifty-seven something um, for the course of the year plus some of that um, planning for the monitoring phase.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions, comments? I have a few of your own mine. I know that during one of the slides that you all had during the presentation, and I, I know I've heard you say it before, and Mrs. Oliver Brady, um, you all have a support system that's from the bottom up, not necessarily from the top down. And I need to see.
Yes. One of my favorites too.
And, and of that, uh, we've experienced as such. And it is, because it's been all-inclusive. A few years ago, I came before the board, our team had shared that we're really drawing attention to NIT was the intentionality, the collaboration and the sustainability. And we've already started to bear witness to and have some early successes. We had our uh, secondary administrators, our secondary principals presenting to the board a month or two ago regarding some of the early successes that we've seen. Not great successes that we will see, but all the structures and systems have been put in place. We're building upon that. And it started from uh, the bottom up as far as that, that support model. And our students are, are really starting to uh, to feel the effects of it. Encamped, um, embedded, others use, are using encamped because you all have been encamped with us, uh, and then really in the trenches. So it's not a bells and whistles and you go away after you've sowed it. You all have been putting that work in. Uh, Perry Township Schools, we have visited Perry Township School several times over. We've met with Perry Township uh, Central Office Leadership Team. Uh, their pitbull teachers, teachers, students, the old nine hours. And they have been, uh, they, they, they've allowed us to encamp with them. And then, and then they've taken us on the wing and provided us with resources to continue to move work. Uh, clusters, those cluster sessions, that's a ton of reflection. And that's where I think we are really, and again, we also pose and, and give true credit to my entire academy, but our Chiefs of Education maker, Mr. Fowler and Mrs. Mark were along with our principals, structural coaches, mentor teachers. They all just been doing a tremendous job of carrying the work. Because while myself, Mrs. Bowser, Mrs. Scow, and others, maybe all trying to counsel other metaphorical challenges, they really kept student achievements at the forefront, forefront of what we've been doing. Uh, but that cluster piece allows for our teachers to be reflected out there in structural practices. And in all this thing in form which our principals can, can presume. But ultimately, in the end, your, your product speaks for itself. And this is definitely not fluff. It's something that has been time-tested and true. I know we've experienced that. And as far as the strategic planning process, with the strategic planning process, um, we safely assume you all, yet again, still be right there along the way.
Absolutely.
Guy, Kelly.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up cluster. It is, it is a, the superior, I, I really believe this with my whole being and I know it might sound biased, but it is the superior vehicle for teacher professional learning. And if we want to change this experience our students have in the classroom every day or improve student outcomes, we have to support our teachers in their own professional growth and learning and hone their skills each and every day, each and every week. Cluster does that at a far superior level than a traditional PLC model in multiple ways. And so I'm glad to hear you highlighting cluster specifically as the vehicle for supporting excellent teaching and therefore uh, supporting uh, improved student outcomes. It, it really is, um, you haven't had a chance, board members to visit a cluster meeting yet. Um, I would certainly do so. And I know Brad and, and Mark and Elizabeth can help you, you know, decide where, where might be some good opportunities to observe and win. But they are, they are working hard to support their students each and every week. And they come together and collaborate and pour into themselves so that they can better serve your students.
Chiefs of Education, anything to share or? Which that conversation?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say I, I have appreciated is um, sometimes at a high school, there are so many moving parts. Um, and so it can feel like if something is presented as a one-size-fits-all, that is very, very difficult to try to engage every subject matter. And I think what I have appreciated, and I, I think Ms. Holtby and Ms. Johnson, is that it's a framework and it provides you tools and resources so that you can meet departments where they are, right? They're, they, high schools are sometimes schools within a school where a math department may be further along than an English department. And what cluster and that framework provides is you can go meet a department where they are um, and support them where they're at. And so um, Angie has been wonderful to work with in that way. And um, I think I've just really appreciated the, the, the um, the, the framework of tools that we can provide to teachers in, in subject areas to meet them where they're at.
And to piggyback off that, the ownership that they take in the work.
Correct.
That they have been producing in cluster, taking it back to their classrooms, their reflections have been genuine and exciting. I think that they're excited for the work.
And ultimately, that's the bottom of our model. That's the bottom of our model. Because it becomes all-inclusive and to Mrs. Mark, uh, I would say. That would turn that, that. And to Mrs. Mark, I was telling you, that will determine that, that ownership. As we know, having former educators here, most of the day is, that's, that's more than half about.
This, this system I've seen, it can really help you solve any student learning or instructional problem that you're having. So undergoing some curriculum shifts, as I understand. So this system of support, the structures that you see up here on the screen that you've hopefully observed and you've invested in here, can help you solve the problem of how to implement new reading curriculum, for example. If we're thinking about what's happening within Indiana and our, and our high schools and how we're rethinking high schools, use that phrase that we hear a lot these days, you know. You know, we want our students to have more relevant learning experience. This can help solve that problem. If we're seeing a need in terms of, you know, supportive learning environments that are inclusive of all backgrounds and, and cultures, this system can help solve that problem. So this is a system that is, is built to last over time. And, and whatever need you're seeing in front of it, we can run it through these structures to help solve that problem. In five years, there might be another instructional need that you're seeing likely to, to be the, the case. And so this system will help to solve that problem, starting with district leaders, school leaders, teacher, groups of teachers, individual teachers, and getting that, the change we want down to the student level in every classroom every day.
So a couple more questions. I do, I definitely see the advantage of having you guys put a strategic plan for us together in regards to, you guys have the intimate knowledge. You've worked with our teachers, our students, there's the accountability component. Could you tell me a little more about a couple of the other components, which I'm not hearing anything about, which would be like marketing facilities? I mean, all of those two things are a large part of what we would want to have. You know, as part of the strategic plan, we need to have a marketing plan for our facilities for that five, five year. So, yeah, what could you provide us?
Well, I think that's where you, you have to start with the goals. All your goals are going to be revolving around academics. I was using as an example, we're here to support academics. But you would have facilities, operations, you know. Usually there's about four pillars that kind of fall under that, and academics would be one of those pillars. You definitely need to address operations and facilities and, and the work that we do within the groups. You know, once we, we kind of distinguish what are those needs and we start identifying the goals, then we will be really strategic in what are the action steps to achieve the goal that we're seeking under facilities or under operations.
And do you have like a marketing arm of NIT that you work with that?
We do. We have a communications division. We have a, I mentioned a research and evaluation division. So if there was a need for, to bring those additional arms of our organization in, in terms of, let's say, you know, analyzing data long term, we have that research and evaluation arm with, of a team of multiple PhD level researchers. That's their, that's their sole job to provide that service to our partners. That could be something that we could bring in to help with that monitoring. Our communications team as well. Already is thinking about how to tell the stories of our, if the current, current level of partners like Richmond and, and kind of shine that bright light on successes. Thinking about what you might want to put on your website. You know, what you might want to push out to your community. How we might want to even communicate to local and state level policymakers. You know, kind of the sky's the limit there. But yes, our communications team also could be a component to helping you share your stories, share your successes, communicate your vision, you know, how to do that in the best way possible.
Well, I think, Mrs. Oliver Brady, again, sincerely appreciate you all coming back to join us, keep your hands to the bar with us. And help us move this a little more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, we are ready for public commentary. Do you have anyone signed up to speak this evening? We'll move on to new action items.
President. Trustees, I ask that to move for action. I'm for approval. Mrs. Mark, would you want to be? Foundation call.
Thank you, Dr. Ray. Good evening, Board Trustees. It's time to start planning for the twenty four, twenty five school year. So before you, you have a master service agreement and service order with Orange Grove Therapy submitted for your consideration and approval for virtual speech and language services across the district. We continue to need to partner with an outside organization to provide speech and language therapy for our students virtually as we're still are in a shortage of in-person SLPs.
Thank you. Motion to approve Master Services Agreement, Service Order, It's Born Through Therapy LLC is presented.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Stoltz and second by Stevens. Questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed nay. Vote passes seven to zero.
President. Martin Trustees, I now want to ask that Mrs. Jamie Bowser, she from HR and Finance, joins us for Action Item Four Point Zero Two and Four Point Zero Three. Mrs. Bowser.
Thank you, Dr. Ray.
Stay for Four Point Zero Four. Sorry.
Maybe. Good evening. The first at Four Point Zero Two is Resolution Number Twenty Four Zero Four Dash One, Resolution to Address Matters Relating to Eclipse Day. The resolution is being presented to address matters relating to the closure of Richmond Community Schools due to the Eclipse Day. RCS school facilities were closed and asynchronous e-learning was utilized on Monday, April eighth. The resolution addresses provisions relating to the payment of RCS employees due to the district-wide facility closure. Our employees did work remotely on that day and provided a structure in which to do so and to be accountable. This is just a good mechanism to make sure that the State Board of Accounts is happy with this.
Thank you.
I move to approve Four Point Zero Two Resolution Number Sixty Four Zero One, that one.
Also, I'm going to have a motion by Member Stevens and a second by Member Stoltz. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. So the, the corporation closing came up, I don't know, maybe six years ago now. I think it was the first time that anyone remembered that it's totally shut down and we paid everyone. And I think the board was fairly unhappy at that and had charged, I believe, administration looking at possibly creating work opportunities so that hourly folks basically could have opportunity to get paid. I know where we have virtual work available, I guess. I would just reiterate that point that I think actual work, I mean, it's, I don't know how virtual work happens for some jobs. I'm not asking for an explanation. But I just think it's, it's real important for the administration to make sure that, that our employees have an opportunity to earn money or earn their pay and that work is being done for the corporation that needs to be done. So that's all.
If I may, because we did. So we had Karen, had many of her hourly maintenance and custodial staff come in to check on our facilities that had them report. So she had taken care of, of that aspect. We also did put in a remote mechanism to make sure our other hourly employees were able to check on students. And our principals, our building leaders made sure that they had work to do so that they could also be paid and compensated during that time. But they had instructional activities that they also were to do remotely, whether that was calling children or also being available to them to help with their work throughout the day. So they were able to also get paid.
I heard from several teachers that they really appreciated not having to go to the building, just not knowing what was going to happen in our building. So appreciating, you know, everyone thinking of that and thinking about, you know, just the possible safety of people moving that day.
But I've also known from my own children's experience of the, the seniors' lessons. They've all been signed, how they engaged in the entire experience, as long as even had access to their educators. So, so like tiered support that we should use. Many of our, that's why I was to ask, also, we're equipped with proper technologies to continue the key communication and support.
And I will say to Mr. Webber's point, that our classified staff was very appreciative that they were considered to do this as well, to, to this point.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. Vote passes seven to zero.
As we, Martin Trustees, I come before you for, which is not in Four Point Zero Four. Oh, you know what?
I haven't had Four Point Zero Three yet.
Three. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bowser.
I mean, you can do this one.
No, no, no. You have to. Your support chair.
Permanent cue is Resolution Two Twenty Four Zero Four Dash Two, Purchase of Gift Cards Resolution. Resolution, this resolution is being presented in accordance with the State Board of Accounts, Extracurricular Uniform Compliance Guidelines Manual to be able to purchase gift cards for meals related to the eighth grade trip, meal trip for students while traveling. The funds have been collected in advance for the expense out of the eighth grade trip, DCA funds. This is just something that is required in order to pay for the meals by gift cards. And after, I think, some discussion today, to Mr. Fowler's credit, that they were just double checking and make sure, making sure that everything was accounted for. This is one thing that we've done differently from last year to this year. So we just wanted to kind of tie a bow in it and make sure, again, I, I really like to keep the State Board of Accounts happy. And this will do that and make sure our kiddos are paid without, or our kiddos are fed. And there's a mechanism to pay them that can be enough flexible, but have constraints to protect the schools rather than just providing, you know, trying to protect fraudulent expenses as well. Not being, I just actually was reading a fraudulent scam from, from the, the bank and how to avoid those issues. And I think that this will help, especially knowing that they're traveling across states.
Move for approval.
Second, having a motion by Zaleski and a second by Stoltz. Questions or comments?
Um, do we give, does it break it down in like the kid gets a gift card or is it for the chaperone? The chaperone for each bus. Great question. And I did put the log in there because we want to make sure that the log, the person purchasing, it's always one of those, it's a very cautious practice using gift cards. They can be used in a great sense. However, with the short term, I wanted to make this resolution very specific for what this use was for. And if it's something that we would like to consider, using them for incentive type based programs, whether it be for employees or students, that's something to certainly consider. But I wanted to kind of keep it restricted for this. But it, I think there's going to be a total of ten gift cards total. And it will probably be Visa gift cards so that they, if they don't have a Burger King on their path or, or whatever it may be, it gives them that enough flexibility to.
And I went all day for a trip. We had to have travel checks.
I think this will be a little bit more helpful for them than those.
They should get a make.
True.
Miss Conner, that's going on.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay. Vote passes seven to zero.
Now on to Four Point Zero Four. President, Brian, the Trustees, come before you all as you get your request. For Alamo Home Service, Richmond City Police Department. As presented, they will be tossed into the sheet. Event there in May, they will like to serve Alamo Home Service.
Motion. So moved. Motion by Board Member Stoltz, a second by Zaleski. Any questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Nay. Vote passes seven to zero.
President, MartinTrustees, I now ask the Chief of Operation, Mrs. Karen Scous, joins us for Action Items Four Point Zero Five and Four Point Zero Six.
Good evening. Before you tonight is the, the bid for the RHS roof. This roof is for the area that is from door fifty through the library and down to the art area. It does not cover much wire, but it is for that area. The total bid was for five hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. This did come to the board last month with an error, and that has been corrected in this second rebid. So it is our recommendation that Chammel and Sons Inc. be awarded the bid for the high school roof replacement of five hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars.
Moving on to bid for the RHS roof.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Stoltz, a second by Stevens. Questions and or comments?
Have we used them before?
Yes, they do. Most of our roofs, they're out of Connersville. We don't get a lot of roofing companies that participate with the size of our roofs. They, they don't quite have the capacity sometimes. So Chammel has done a number of our roofs in the past, yes.
How did that bid come in compared to projections?
It was on budget. It was exactly where projections expected it to be. That's why we knew something was wrong in the original bid because it was way too low for the size of the roof and the type of materials they were using. So we knew that something was wrong. And in the post-bid meeting, it was discovered they had the wrong square footage when they did the calculations. So they wanted to correct that and we honored that. They, they come and assist us very quickly in emergencies and, and they're very responsive. So it worked out.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Vote passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to Action Item Four Point Zero Six. We have before you tonight a request to advertise for the Fairview Structural Repairs Project. There is a section of Fairview. It is on the, the almost northernmost part of the building. The building, if you, if you kind of walk down the halls or look at it from the outside, it has sections that had been added on from the original portion of the building. This is not the farthest north section, but the one right before it. It does impact, it, it impacts four classroom areas, but two primarily like classroom size areas. And with that, we need to do some structural repairs that will allow us also to redo those classroom areas while we're in there. So before you tonight is the request to advertise for the Fairview Repairs Project.
I move to approve Four Point Zero Six as presented, request to advertise for Fairview Structural Repairs.
Second thought. I made a motion by Board Member Stevens, second by Board Member Stoltz. Questions or comments?
Question. So in looking at the drawings, it looked like it's actually foundational?
Some of it is. Some of it is from the, when they built it on.
So.
So it, just the time.
Is close for concern maybe or?
It won't be after this project.
Okay.
So we're fixing everything that needs fixed. It, it has to do with the age of, of the addition and the building. So we will rectify all of those issues through this project.
Okay. Glad to hear you say that, please.
Yes, I think that you will see as we move forward with projects, it's a holistic approach to fix what is wrong and not to just Band-Aid some things whenever possible.
You'll be utilizing that proceeds to be able to do just that.
And the timeline looks like it won't impact the interior when students are in session?
It should not. We have gone ahead and talked with Mrs. Service about a contingency plan should something unexpected happen. Should we not be able to get equipment in time? But we don't expect it to be an issue. It is just in case. So we have already had those conversations. I'm a little bit excited about this project because we're going to try something new with just the, the, the classroom environment and, and see how it's, you know, we've already kind of gotten a lot of teacher feedback, gotten things to just talk about. gotten things to just talk about that we might be able to model, um, as we move forward, especially with the opportunity that this has one regular classroom and then three, um, small group areas that are very different. And so we're able to kind of look at some, um, maybe some mobile equipment, some different transitions in the walls. Mr. McCurdy has worked on some really fascinating things that I'm excited about because then we'll be able to see if it works and if they're happy. And we can model it in other areas as well. It's a perfect opportunity to take a look at some things as we've been looking to plan toward a true strategic alignment throughout, you know, updating our buildings. So this project, uh, holds a lot of potential for me. I'm really excited to see it come to fruition because it's, it's going to give us an envelope for a lot of things.
Yes.
Um, I have, it's more just a comment. Um, I think me like being visual, it'd be helpful to have like just an outside picture of what, what that area looks like, just.
So.
You know, trying to like think through it and see the architect, the drawings, I think it's hard to connect the dots.
Do you, are you familiar with Fair, Fairview, the look of Fairview?
Not really. You know what I mean? Like just.
Okay, I can send you a picture through email.
I mean, I can look it up, I just.
It's gonna look exactly the same when it's done from the outside. So from the outside, you won't be able to even tell that we did anything. Um, from the inside, it, it will look exactly the same spatially. It's all of those, the things that happen inside.
Okay.
That'll make it look a little different, the people that live in it every day.
When you walk down that, that hallway, it's, it's very easy to determine what sections were built, what name were built because the hallway is, it's, it just has that feel, you know, this area, moving into a new area, so.
It has natural dividers, um, if you, when you go down the hall, you can see it. Yeah, but I can, I can send you a picture.
My third grade class.
Any other questions and comment or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes seven zero. Next on the agenda is item five point oh one, policy zero one four four point one compensation. And I know that this would be where the approval of the second reading and approval of the policy as presented. So any other question?
I move that we, um, to move on to final readings, policy zero one four four point one of the compensation.
And I think this would be.
Pass, yeah, the approval.
The policy. Okay, let me amend the, the, that, uh, so I move that we approve policy zero one four four five one.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, so I have a motion by Board Member Stoltz, a second by Pickering, questions and comments? I know last time we had kind of discussed and Ron kind of gave us some history that this has not, this policy has not been changed for twenty plus years. And, um, this compensation change would bring us in, um, line with the state, with, with the state has increased.
Same as before, I'll be voting against because I think there's other compensation we have, uh, completely uh, looked through in the district with, uh, some of our staff. And I think as fiscal body, we should be the last ones to address.
Other questions or clarification? I mean, let's see. Next year goes up a lot. Do we still have to vote every year? I mean, we can still say.
Yeah, I believe so. Ron, is that correct? If, if, let's say the state next year increases the compensation, this, we still would, if, this doesn't automatically, look, we'd have to vote every time. So. Yeah, it would still.
I wouldn't count on that happening. This is the first time in twenty years.
Yeah. But in twenty years.
It just doesn't auto brief it. It just gives us the ability to align with the state if they.
Yes.
And just for public clarification, because a lot of people don't understand that the role of the school board, elected school board official in the state of Indiana, uh, the compensation for pales extremely by comparison to other elected officials throughout the state. And people are really taken aback when I explain to them, uh, the number of meetings that this board in particular has throughout the year based upon committees and other things, yet the total amount of maximum compensation that we receive. I'm in agreement with members of Zaleski right now. There are other things. However, for the publicly things that we make X amount of dollars in comparison, let's say the city council members or, or other elected officials, they are totally surprised when they realize that if figured out the number of meetings that we have less, we make less than, uh, nineteen cents per hour for the time that we meet. Uh, but we do it because our belief in public education, the mission of public education is why, so.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Okay, I'm gonna, roll call, um, aye for in favor and nay for opposed. Stoltz?
Aye.
Zaleski?
Nay.
Weber?
Aye.
Brand?
Nay.
Ruffin, aye. Stevens?
Nay.
Pickering?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. Uh, next is our board reports and discussion.
President, what are the trustees? I know that, uh, we just, as a central official team, those extended, uh, leaders, we're still appreciating your participation, it's a huge, important group that we have. This jump, I know that members Stevens and you are picking and hard at work with the policy working. And they'll get member, Pickering, members of Zaleski, they're hard at work, they're seeing, you know, they pride with these, you know, they'll, uh, they need compensation. We, uh, here, facilitate, share, we have, there's lots of, just the holders, the crowd, but also engage and share the conversation as necessary.
Starting the policy winning group items as well.
Also, simply because I'll, I'll just speak from just thoughts from the part. First of all, thank you to Mr. Mops for his organization in our meetings that we have had. Uh, you know, meetings can be very boring. Uh, committee meetings, let's be real, can be very boring. We have seen it in the past where, you know, if, if there is no focus and direction given, it seems like it's very boring. I look forward to the meetings that we have if Mr. Mops stays on task, you know, with the policy that we go over. I think I can now navigate through, uh, through those policies. Well, I'm looking at something, he makes very, very, yeah, using the term of the formal financial, very riveting. And our last meeting, okay, our last meeting, unfortunately, I had to leave early. And I was a little bit jealous because I had, you know, previously planned things. I called back to see if the meeting was over. But I wanted to get back. And I just, I say that for the purpose of, uh, we're taking very seriously the efforts of the committee of policies. Thank you, Ms. Polzer, you know, Dr. Wright, uh, for those who are here. But I think, I think we're on task to really accomplish something very well for the board and for the corporation. Yep. I heard Michael, you?
Um, yeah, so we kind of got through our first little batch, um, last week. So sort of a good test to kind of see, you know, the cadence and how many we can get through, um, you know, it's gonna be, well, next week or whenever, schedule, um, it happens to fall on kindergarten night. Um, we'll be kind of going through the policies we had questions on or comments, kind of start pulling those out in conjunction with some other, um, pressing issues. But, um, yeah, we got through quite a few. There's some that, you know, um, you have personal communication devices. It's sort of, there's some things happening with the state, so it's hard to really address. You don't want to try to implement something with, and, you know, you might get some more guidance. So, um, yeah, but yes, um, Mr. Mops does keep us on task. Uh, he's very good at that, so I well appreciate it. Um, but, you know, I love this, I hope, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you guys for putting your time in. So the, the process, so when you are making, how do we know as a board what changes or what you decided on or?
Oh, remember, I'll tell you.
It's something you made with your one batch. So how is that communicated, I guess, what?
Yeah, so we sort of, I don't know if we really settled on a, a full plan. We kind of talked about some things of, you know, uh, Mr. Mops is going through, there's some, you know, we're scratching this out, checking off this, making certain selections. Um, and then I, my assumption is sort of moving those into a new folder, checking them off that they're good to go. Um, we've sort of talked about some things on, uh, if we get one big moving document, which I would love, which I know everyone's gonna be like, you know, we've printed out all the PDFs and scanned them in as one. Um, but I think there are some changes, um, in board docs that you can search a little easier.
Okay.
Um, if I understood that correctly versus before, it was sort of going through and trying to, you know, some things wouldn't come up and, and, you know, is Mr. Mops okay?
I think you part his interest when you said.
Yeah.
So, like, so what's gonna happen is any, anyone that we make changes on will have to come before the board again and be voted on again. So any changes at all. So, um, so you'll see those and you'll see the changes that we made.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so you should be seeing, I don't know, like, uh, ninety to a hundred of them.
No.
Last.
No, you'll see, you'll see probably, I would guess, ten, maybe, no more than ten coming up, but there are a lot. So, um, and not all of them are gonna need changes. Some of them, I think, um, you know, if, if the committee or the working group thinks that it's, it's solid the way it is, you won't see. Um, so it's just maybe that we may change.
Okay. And then when we get the changes, will there be a strike or, or will we be able to see?
Yes, you'll be able to see the changes that were made.
Great. Thank you.
And to Kim's point about the, um, the search feature, as those have been uploaded, the search ability is so far superior because they're not all individually attached, separate PDF documents are embedded within, um, the system for board docs. So it's a lot more user friendly and interactive.
And, uh, one last thing now, I'll do that. Uh, Ms. Pickering also, uh, talked about some of the other ones that we're gonna be looking at. So with the end of the legislative session this last month, um, we'll be meeting with our NEOLA representative and we'll have new policies. Like, there's one that we think is really important for students' personal devices. But those, um, NEOLA will come up with a, with kind of a template for that that we can look at before. So we had that one scheduled. We set up, let's put that one to the side and we want something else. So, um, so there's quite a few that, that are gonna be, I'm excited to find some.
And what we're doing also, Mr. Mops says he's pulling those down. Those are also going through cabinet and going through, um, the individual department. Also, if they're impacted, they're invited to that, that working group as well to provide any input or to have the input ahead of time. So we're also making sure that they, they are included during that process. Thank you.
Um, I would just offer, I think that all communications need to be carbon copied to all board members. Um, even if meeting times, meeting schedules, policies under review, that's why you have a CC carbon copy. And I think, so we are in the loop and know what's going on. We don't have to be involved. We don't have to read them if we don't want. But I think for any meeting, working group, uh, like I didn't know you guys had a, had a preview of some interesting plans. You know, that's something the entire board should have seen, uh, especially prior to today. Um, so I would, I would encourage, I don't know who makes that decision, but I think that's what we need to do personally. Um, then the second thing is that first batch we went through and there was a significant number of policies that needed review by board members. Um, I've not really seen any activity on that. And I know I was trying to rush before vacation, so I did not offer myself explanation on any of mine. I just marked in needs review. And so I don't know.
So that's.
Plan for those.
Yeah, so that's an action item for me. So you all will be getting, for us to sort of go through those again.
Yeah.
And you all can read through them and, you know, if you marked it needs review or left a comment, what kind of will those, or maybe you read it again and you're like, oh, I don't really have.
Yeah, me, I don't.
Because we're gonna go through them again. Um, we did talk about, you know, I changed that format just a little bit on the sheets, but, um, that's on my to do, to set that, so we can search, so I can do this.
And then lastly, um, I would suggest that we go back to two readings for policy. I really was unhappy how we question policies through one reading. And so I, I hope that, I don't know who makes that decision. I guess, I could personally think that forward. But I really think that it's the way to go for policy review. And so I would encourage us to return to a two reading, policy approved.
I think that makes sense as we're bringing up, you know, the ones that we want to dig into anyway.
Any.
So like the process.
Right, yes.
I think that.
As well as policy.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean.
I, I think the one reading was that one time that it was.
We did it more than once.
We did, I guess we did it twice to compete for the batches.
Well, the batches, yeah. But I like, yeah.
I, I, I vote that we go back to the two reading.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm a little unclear. Uh, at the beginning of the year, we always, uh, uh, we do pass all, we do pass all the, we do pass it, all the existing policies, okay? But I thought we recently had discussion that we can pass the policies, but then also then afterwards break them down for individual review on them.
Right.
And that way, you know, any subtle changes or anything else that needs to be made, that's when we go back to, uh, changes made, uh, policy presented, you know, move forward for second reading, you know, that gives after that first reading gives us a chance for any discussion or any additional clarification or change that needs to be made, move it to second reading, have that discussion, et cetera, et cetera, and then take the vote. We approve them at the beginning of the year, you know, part one, so to speak, and then, and then we have the opportunity to break them down afterwards. Um, and, you know, individually or in batches or so under review. So I will, I, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm right, that we're not moving anything, uh, so to speak, on first reading. Uh, and just accepting the policy because when we do bring them forward, we always do it from first reading to second reading then approved. Unless I'm wrong, John. Also, if I can. We vote twice. Huh? We vote twice. Yeah. If I could also go back to your first point, if you would like, I'd be more than happy to, uh, have Kim, uh, have her, I greet you, our committee, maybe, maybe do a summary of the policies that we reviewed and everything else to go out to everybody. Uh, just a brief summary, saying these are the policies that we reviewed.
A spreadsheet. No, summary.
I mean, my preference is when we get off, we get, we're meeting, you know, we get the meeting notice because there's just two of you. So if someone wanted to join you, they would be allowed by law. Um, and then that we get any minutes that go out. I mean, I don't, I mean, I just think.
And what the policies we talked about sort of marked on there.
Yeah, it, it, I don't, as, as non-working group members.
No, absolutely.
We don't have to participate at your level, but it's nice to give a quick glance.
I think I, I, I sent something. I, I think you got something either today or yesterday.
Yeah, that was like one page we got today.
Yeah. That's.
Yeah, but I wasn't sure. I mean, and that's a question too. Now, do you want sort of the listing with the meeting notes or do you want a monthly synopsis?
The more you send, there's no negative. It's electronic. It takes no errand, tree killing. It's, uh.
You know, some people.
Yeah. We, we are able to, I think, as board members, decide if we want to look at it or not.
No, totally.
But I think we should have it, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would be my preference. I'm just speaking for myself.
I think it's helpful for any working group for that to have them, for sure.
And the reality of it is, if you do it that way, then when we do go to readings, you know, in a board setting, uh, first reading, second reading, uh, you will have had the opportunity also outside of our committee meetings to have the time to go over them and ask any additional questions prior to the second reading or, or approval, so. My thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you do anything special for that, I would just copy as a thing you guys give.
Yeah, and definitely, you know, we got this little nice handy agenda too with all of them. Yeah.
Great. Um, board report six point oh one to ride working for Kevin Pete.
So first working group, uh, there, Mr. Mops to be there, riveting.
So first working group, uh, there, Mr. Ross to be there, riveting. Leader.
Inspiring.
Inspiring, oh, we had inspiring play also. And, uh. He, uh, kind of laid out just some thoughts. So this, this meeting happened a month ago, uh, so we're, we're due for another meeting here shortly. We're gonna have one meeting for a month in the short term. Uh, we had just gotten access and the ability to really start digging into, uh, the property there where the softball fields in McBride Stadium is. So there was, we have, uh, looking, we're gonna start looking at the possibilities of a multi-use surface, uh, to maximize the impact of those facilities. With the debt issuance, there was three hundred thousand of, uh, initial dollars. There's a little bit in operations that was set aside. I don't remember what that number was, but, looking at, that three hundred is just touching the surface of making the facility safe, usable, and whatnot. Karen updated us and will, on the immediate needs, the roofing, security gates. Uh, the roofing was in process and I believe is done, and the security gates are up. We had, uh, some vehicles doing donuts on the property soon after purchase the property, so. Do you? Look, you guys, somebody, I thought you said sorry, I didn't. Maybe it was Austin, I apologize. Yeah.
I don't know what I would have done if I had, but I did chase him.
They're looking at, uh, both what is now the softball field and McBride, so we're looking at them both. Uh, so we're reducing our likelihood of any Title IX, uh, compliance issues, so we're making sure we're, we're taking both pieces. And ADA compliance and parking needs have to be addressed, so anything, improvements we do from here forward, uh, ADA compliance is gonna have to be, uh, taken into account, and, uh, there was some discussion about the potential uses for feeder programs and whatnot, to make sure it's not just an RHS baseball, RHS softball, it's, it's all the feeder programs being able to use facilities, so. Uh, in the last week, I believe Karen just sent an initial spreadsheet of, of her investigation of some of the initial costs. Uh, Dr. Clay, I believe, he's met with, uh, Sprint Turf, is that right, Rick Youngning?
Yes, I know.
Uh, just investigating what it would look like. And can it be used? Because we get turf, is it, what's the cost first? We know kind of the longevity and what we're getting, but then we have the feasibility of other boards even out there beyond baseball. Yeah.
I think that's great. Certainly exciting to have that property and the potential for it, so appreciate the way we have a committee in it being led by Karen and Clay.
Clay, uh, shared some different facilities around the state, just trying to spark some imagination and visioning of what that property can look like. Yeah, Gaybridge can still have the, um, historical pieces in place.
I can say, I, actually, are you going to Westfield this weekend too?
Yeah.
Our sons have soccer games at, at the Westfield.
Great, great, great.
So I haven't seen it, so I'm actually really excited.
Oh, wow.
To kind of go and see.
Take a walk to the rest.
Yeah.
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 Let's not use that as a target.
Let's go with Gaybridge, okay? But that is probably twenty-eight hours out there, just to be clear. And that, that is the, a proverbial.
You'll love it though. I know, I think the, the boys are probably gonna be like, this is amazing.
So, well, when I said that, it's a little bit look that you all gave me as far as, but to your point, we're gonna start, start small. Start small, and sales and growth. But I, I would like to, uh, take the opportunity, I know it's been mentioned, I know you all referenced it, uh, in your responses to our most recent, uh, survey survey, uh, the hard work that Mr. Clay owes the athletic department, uh, Mrs. Scow, facilities department, all their teams and amazing folks that have been putting the work in to see to it that while we are envisioning, envisioning what, what the future may hold, they're still taking care of business to see to it that our students may utilize the facility, uh, and most importantly, keep it in a safe, normal fashion so that, uh, don't go twerking down the road, or some of those other things that, that come with trying to renovate, uh, a historic building. I know Mr. Webber has a particular jingle that he likes to associate with McBride and the fencing around McBride, but, um, yeah, there's a TV show that, that you, Mr. Bogdanoff. But nevertheless, again, tremendous, uh, tremendous, yeah.
Roger, you feel, take your crowds.
I just can't picture it without, I mean, it's like a staple.
Grew up, I agree with you.
I know, but if you grew up playing like volleyball and softball and that was just the place to be, it's just such a, you know, like, it's, it's hard to imagine without it, so.
Um, I did have one thing I wanted to bring up, uh, with the turf, um, you know, the EU just banned turf, uh, or certain types of turf with the microplastics. And I know we're putting new turf in. I would be, I'm guessing that's coming in the future at some point, it may be a decade down the road, but, but I would also consider natural kind of alternatives, like, uh, more sturdy grass. You know, I, I wouldn't just focus entirely on turf. I'm not saying I won't support that, but I would make sure that we have maybe other options.
Are you?
Yeah, I'm kind of, since you're kind of looking at.
Well, I, Sprint Turf offers a thing, uh, Sprint Turf has gone to a more natural surface that they do offer. It's approximately ten cents more per square foot, but that's not, that's not a significant, like.
Yeah.
Cost increase. It is coconut fibers, so if you ever.
Okay.
If you ever were asked to cut a piece of our, our turf off or any turf off anywhere, and you know that the little pellets, they go everywhere, they're in locker rooms, they're everything.
There's some other house.
This fiber is essentially taken from a coconut shell, it's embedded and packed into the, um, into the surface. If you pick it up, it looks like a saw that we rolled out and other. Um, that is also, uh, according to scientific, it is closest to playing on natural grass as far as just the field, you know, where there still has eight to twelve-year guarantee, depending on what different type of fiber you have on the actual grass itself or the turf. But, uh, he showed us all of that, Brett, uh, Mr. Walton was there, Aaron was not able to be there yesterday. Um, but they, they did show us all different types of opportunities with it. Uh, I think they measured to look at, at different options as far as turfing the infield, um, turfing the softball field and infield at McBride, and even are going to look at turfing all three of the major fields so that South Diamond, McBride Stadium, and the softball field, just to give us kind of a whole gamut of different options and groups can, you, you as the group would be able to determine what.
I, I guess I would just, seeing how I think in the next decade, this will really flush itself out, uh, if we're gonna decide it's a hazard or not, and, uh, we'd just be a little bit cautious, uh, that we don't have, you know, like you guys said, the football field returning the turf would cost more than we would put the cost of what the turf in. And I'd hate to be it myself, you know, five years from now, trying to figure out how to replace that turf with grass.
Well, even though, so that, the, the banning of production, what you were talking about will still not take place for another decade.
Okay.
So even though that has been banned, that the production of that will not take.
What's the rubber pellets is the problem.
Correct, that's the pellets.
Yeah.
The grass or the turf itself, all they're going to do in those scenarios will be lift the grass, because if you've ever seen it, it's just like the carpet that you can see it looks, but the, it is the fill that they are paying down the turf.
Thank you. I knew you were ahead of it, Clay, I just didn't know.
Okay, um, Board Report, any other discussion, six point oh three, the discussion?
Yes, um, I just wanted to report out on our tour of RHS. Um, Austin, Kim, Kristen, and I got to head over and spend time with Mrs. Wolfie, and it was wonderful, so much so that I wrote that, I came back and I was like, that was so, like, uplifting. Um, it really was just, um, seeing, you know, from the first time I went over five years ago as a, as a board member and saw like, you know, okay, we've got lots, lots of potential here, but lots of work to do, and just seeing a lot of that coming to fruition was exciting. So that's kind of what you're gonna hear from me. Uh, one of the biggest, um, improvements that we got to see, um, and according to Mrs. Wolfie, was the culture of the workplace. She went on and on about just how much she has appreciated, um, the administration, um, the board, and some of the difficult decisions, as well as, um, investing more money into her staff. She said, uh, this is the first time in years that she's fully staffed with paras, that she's fully staffed with environmental personnel. We got to meet one of the personnel who actually happened to be, um, a grad, uh, an RHS grad. It was like, oh, that's awesome, I love the full circle. So that was exciting. Uh, she went on to praise the NIET initiative, um, as Kristen mentioned. She was, um, kudos to, uh, Angie Kendall, um, went on and on about how, and we, we talked to Celeste Johnson also, who, who said, you know, same thing, just NIET is working for them. So that was really exciting just to hear all, all that. Uh, also, her, Mark Fowler's name sprinkled around, uh, throughout the day as she was singing her praises, um, along with Jamie Bolser, who just actually happened to be there, ran into Jamie as she was.
So intimidated, seeing.
No, she was there for, um, one of her mobile visits, uh, so that was really cool to see her in action, uh, and, uh, hopefully we didn't interrupt that too much.
Great.
So this is what the mobile visit looks like, so that was fun. Um, it was affirming to see the beautiful terrazzo floors. Uh, that was something that I think we discussed for approximately three years, I mean, you know.
Maybe a little more.
A long, a long decision, but it, it's just, and, you know, lots of discussion, lots of debate, but they're gorgeous and it looks great. And, and it's not just that, uh, the upper walls are refreshed with the burlap off, uh, the, um, soon, soon-to-be lockers are gonna be, you know, looking great. So all, in the classrooms too. Um, it's just a lot of this stuff that we've talked about, just seeing it all come to fruition. Um, I'm almost done, but not quite. We got to talk to Rusty Hensley, and that was, that was especially, um, encouraging to see that there's been an increased emphasis on, um, career training that allows our students to lead directly into jobs after, after high school. And after, um, talking about that for several years, um, as a board, i- it was just very encouraging to see that. So, um, just seeing that we're actually growing, growing that, and then the intentionality and partnering, um, with the Chamber, uh, and making some more connections, growing our connection base, uh, with our community. And ultimately, that's who is benefiting, it's our community, who we are supplying workers to, um, when they have a direct pipeline from graduating right into their, their job. All right, so anyway, finally, we stopped by the art museum, um, and that was just really fun to get to see all of that work that we've been doing also, um, with McGuire Hall, the renovations there. We also had, uh, which was, uh, done by another graduate, nineteen ninety-four, Amy Reinhart. So got to see that, um, beautiful piece, and, uh, Austin, you hadn't been yet, so that was, uh, your first time in the art museum. Um, and I just loved how we discussed how fortunate we are to have that unique space, um, that beautiful facility right here in that we're actually capitalizing on that fact by now offering our, um, our career pathway, and this is our first year for that. So again, just all of these like components that are coming together, and I'm not done yet, because I haven't talked about STEAM also being one of those components that's feeding into, so someone as early as grade five can be integrated into an arts focus here at Richmond, so it was awesome. And I just was very excited, you can tell, uh, so, anything else that you guys got out of it? Because I was just, um, I came back just kind of pumped, like, go RHS, go RCS, so.
I mean, I can say just the one little piece that we talked to Celeste, and she was sort of talking about NIET. Um, you know, me sort of a non-education person, and she sort of gave us some examples of things she's been using. And I was, you know, almost like they are, um, when she's training, sort of putting teachers in the student position, and, you know, how they give feedback, and, um, you know how this, the teachers really picked up on, oh, wait. And they're like, well, now imagine if you're a student and you're not getting certain feedback. And to me, it just kind of made it click a little bit, you know, I, I listened to this, to what we talked about and, um, but to actually sort of have those examples, that, you know, that's sort of what I, you know, pick up on of like, yeah, like, you know, that's, that's what I learned from too, that, that's the type of smarter I am, so I was really encouraged by that. Um, and then, yeah, just, I hadn't been in McGuire since probably, I don't even know.
Well, and we got to tell Austin about four corners.
We talked about, we'll say when we talk about four corners.
I'm sorry, in the library, I heard history book.
Uh, pretty sure you weren't, but. Just, uh, if you saw a lot of kids going that way, go the other direction.
Yes.
Um, yeah, it's always good to kind of revisit. Ray is always enthusiastic, and that's what I really appreciate about her, so.
Yeah, I just, I piggyback off that there, I mean, first of all, Ray's energy is just amazing. I wish I had that much energy all the time also, but, uh, it was really the first time, aside from back to school night this year, that I toured the high school, so, um, thought that was important to get out and do. Um, but when they were talking about the NIET, kind of what you were talking about, the, the role model or role-playing that they were doing, um, I liked how they said that they, they covered some of the information and then immediately went right into a quiz. I was like, well, hold on, but she's like, okay, this, sometimes this is what we're doing to our students. So how do we go back and make sure that they have processed that information? So I, I love that, because, you know, in my professional career, we do that all the time, so. Um, but really stoked to hear about the, um, all the career opportunities that we offer here. I had no idea we offered that here. Um, I knew we had like construction classes, that type of stuff, but, um, just some of the stories that Rusty told us about students that have graduated and went straight into workforce and into a good-paying career right off the bat, that's, that's really exciting. But, um, the kids know that, I mean, I know when I graduated high school, if you wanna be anything in life, you gotta go to college. No matter what for, go to college, get a degree. They now know that they, they can step right out into, uh, a, a well-paying career right out of high school with skills that are really needed in the community, so it's really exciting with that.
Mr. Branch to piggyback, uh, shameless plug, uh, only here in Richmond, in this county, will you, and our students experience, uh, such opportunities.
Yeah.
It didn't happen anywhere else in the county, but it happens here in Richmond. Mrs. Hazel Baker would want us to always know that, that, that everyone belongs in Richmond.
Any other, um, discussion?
As always, oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I did wanna, um, give applause to RCS, um, I talked about the Chamber just a little bit ago, um, but, uh, Mrs. Hazel Baker and Dr. Wright and I went to the Chamber dinner, um, that was celebrating our forty-five-year membership with the Chamber. Um, it has been a wonderful partnership, um, and again, um, I just talked about Mrs. Wolfie's wanting to expand that. Mr. Fowler, I believe you're gonna be involved in that expansion of partnership, and so, um, kudos to RCS and Chamber forty-five years ago, so. Mr. Fowler, I believe you're gonna be involved in that expansion of partnership. And so, um, kudos to RCS and Chamber forty-five years ago. So.
And before we adjourn, uh, you have a brand, congratulations, as we adjourn, completing your first, uh, many school board meetings. Uh, I know that you also have, uh, completed the onboarding process that we offer here at RCS. There's so many others via SBA that I know you'll be engaged in. But, uh, throughout the course of our conversation, that I think was, it, it was scheduled to be roughly an hour, forty-five minutes. We're talking history, but Mr. Brand, um, is a historian himself. He's out of his three bucks. And so, yeah, it was great conversation.